Hello, everyone. Welcome to today's hybrid hearing. New York City Council Hybrid Hearing of the Committee on Youth Services. Everyone, please place all electronic devices to vibrate or silent mode. If you wish to submit testimony, you may send it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that's testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation. Chairs, we are ready to begin.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Althea Stevens, Chair of New York City Council Committee on Youth Services. Today, the Committee on Youth Services is conducting an oversight hearing on New York City's Department of Youth and Community Development Summer Youth Employment Program and Summer Rising 2022. I'd like to recognize that we have Councilmember Jordan, Richardson Jordan, who's here with us. As of today, the hearing, the Committee on Youth Services will examine how the Summer Youth Employment Program and Summer Rising 2022 performance, as well as solicit provider feedback about the challenges and opportunities presented during this past summer and about how the services can be improved. By having this hearing this early, it is my hope that we can address the issues we encountered last summer in an effort to rectify for Summer 2023. On April 13th, 2021, former Mayor Bill de Blasio announced Summer Rising, the city's new summer program for children in grades K through 12, jointly operated by the Department of Education, DOE, and the Department of Youth and Community Development, DYCD. Summer Rising combines DOE summer programming with DYCD's summer camp to provide full, in-person experience, run by local schools, leaders, and community organizations, offering academic support, art, recreational, social and emotional support, and daily free meals to its participants. Even before the COVID outbreak, Summer Youth Employment Programs have been an important connection for thousands of New Yorkers to value internship, employment, and educational opportunities, thereby promoting individual development, so- social, economic upward mobility, and serving as a way to address radical and economic disparities by bolstering life choices and opportunity for disadvantaged youth. Critically, this program has also been a source of much-needed income for youth and their families, easing their survival struggles and implementing a sense of self-esteem, self-confidence, and self-efficiency in participating youth. Now more than ever, Summer Rising and SYP are needed as structuring, organizing influence for New Yorkers, those who've been thrown into disarray by the pandemic. They are needed to reduce youth's social isolation and to address learning loss to support youth's healthy development and growth as productive individuals and engaging members of their community. They are needed to help New York City families struggle to find accessibility, affordability, and addressing learning loss that students may have encountered over the summer. However, during my tour for Summer Rising and SYP across the city this summer, I had the opportunity to speak with those experienced these problems on the front line, youth, families, and program staff. Across the board, their feedback would start with, "It was better than last year." But, before explaining the ways the lack of collaboration and planning and communication hindered their ability to provide programming and supporting staff. This year, Summer Rising issued, started with recruitment. Although most providers had years of experience for summer programming, they were sadly restricted this year. This left parents unclear how to get support with the process, even how to sign up for their preferred site and providers. This confusion was compounded by the placement of multiple providers at single sites, often without a clear methodology for doing so. We also heard from multiple sites that CBOs and school leaders were not connected prior to the start of programming, preventing adequate collaboration and planning for the summer. There were also clear lack of support for CBOs serving D-75 students. IEPs were not shared, paraprofessionals were not provided, and only trainings on online webinars were offered. SYP boosted its own set of challenges. With a midnight enrollment deadline, program staff were expected to stay up into the late night to ensure that youth had proper documentation or risk losing out on a summer job. This program also reflected the lack of collaboration between DOE and DYCD, with schools' schedules being released on the first day of SYP programming, leaving CBO staff to figure out last-minute placement changes and, in many cases, to tell youth they no longer were able to complete the program. Additionally, the rapid growth of program left providers with adequate, without adequate work sites or the ability to properly place students in the field of their choice. I applaud the administration for the expansion of both programs, but providers need and deserve more support to plan and implement vital programs. We are here today to hear concerns of youth parents and providers and advocates and community members. We are here today to work collaboratively to ensure that our youth educational and socioeconomic needs are met and our communities are assisted in watching the collective crisis of the pandemic and recovering from it. I want to thank the staff behind the scenes, making sure that the hearing runs smoothly. I would like to thank Youth Services staff and committee analyst, Policy Analyst Anastasia Zamna, Elizabeth Arts, as well as Finance Analyst Sandra Gray. And big thanks to my staff as well, Chief of Staff Anne and Chief of Staff and Legislative Director Kate Connolly, and the A-Team who's holding down the fort back in the district serving our community. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Public Advocate Jomani Williams for an opening statement.
Sorry, I got a new phone and the volume buttons changed, so I apologize. Well, thank you, everyone. My name is Jomani Williams, and I'm a public advocate of the City of New York. I want to thank Chair Stevens and the members of the Committee on Youth Services for holding this important hearing, for allowing me to speak. And I want to thank the chair for starting this discussion off so early. Very often, we're trying to figure this out in the middle of budget season, how to make this stuff better. So I just want to commend you for having this conversation so early. Thank you to the deputy commissioners and to our director. And give a special shout-out to Mark Traeger, who I served with and did amazing stuff for the young people in our school system. In the past few years, New York City's young people have endured a significant amount of trauma, confusion, and uncertainty. They have expressed isolation, learning loss, and increased housing instability, and gun violence. The effects of the pandemic have been particularly hard on those who live in low-income neighborhoods, youth of more color, and young people with disabilities. Robust academic and recreational, as well as professional development programs have been linked to reductions in violence and crime and positive youth development. That is why city programs like Summer Rising and the Summer Youth Employment Program are absolutely vital, especially considering all that our young people have been through. I first want to express appreciation for Mayor Adams for recognizing the importance of these programs and for his commitment to expanding access to Summer Rising and Summer Youth Employment Program. This past summer, over 100,000 young people participated in Summer Youth and 110,000 young people, young children attended Summer Rising. This is a great achievement, and I hope to see even more slots offered in the years to come. I also want to salute the council who made these things a priority. The rollout of these programs, however, did not come without challenges. While I'm happy that so many families sought to participate in Summer Rising, the demand far outweighed the supply, and 18,000 of available seats for the programs were filled within a week of the application opening. We can infer that parents who were able to secure a seat were those who had access to the internet and were able to be online when the application opened, which is advantageous to those parents who had to work and parents with limited or no access to the internet, such as those living in temporary housing. The DOE did reserve some seats for students experiencing homelessness, students with disabilities, who are guaranteed 12 months of support, and those who fail courses and are mandated to take remedial summer classes. But we do not know how many of these seats were set aside. Even for those, even for those for whom suits were set, seats were set aside, full participation in Summer Rising was not guaranteed. Although programming ran until 6:00 PM, busing services for students with disabilities and students living in temporary housing was not available after 3:00 PM. Students who require busing services should not and must be able, should and must be able to participate in the full day, just like their peers. There is a clear, there's also a clear need for improving communication between the administrations, Summer Rising providers, sites, and families. Many families were left scrambling for seats at their assigned sites. On the first day of Summer Rising, 30 families in Brooklyn were turned away despite their children being assigned to that site. Some parents and caregivers who were reaching out to sites to see if any spots had opened up received no response. For some children who required busing services, the bus arrived without a paraprofessional onboard, preventing the children from boarding the bus, or the site did not have sufficient time to ensure that paraprofessionals would be in the classroom. The Summer Youth Employment Program was able to match 60% of applicants across 17,000 work sites, the largest number the program has ever had. But it had its share of challenges as well. As a result of the pandemic, many organizations across the city are struggling to hire and retain staff, which can present a problem when adding an SYP participant. The city should allow organizations more time to plan how they will be best to be able, how they will best be able to support an SYP participant. The seasonal nature of SYP means that organizations are losing staff at the conclusion of the program. Many organizations would be happy for SYP participants to join any year-round programs they participate in, but need to know how many year-round slots they will have funding for. As SYP expands, the city should invest in more year-round programming for young people. Lastly, it is important to note that the participation in SYP programs requires a social security number, effectively excluding undocumented youth from the program. That is why I've introduced Intro 0188, which will require the creation of a universal youth employment program that is open to all young people in New York City. I would like to thank my colleagues in the City Council and the advocates who have been working with my staff to move forward, move toward employment equity for youth. I look forward to working with the chair to make this bill the best it can be for our young people. Look forward to working with the administration and the City Council to ensure that Summer Rising and SYP successfully reaches as many youth and young people as possible, as well as ensures a productive and positive work experience for both the young person and the employer in 2023 and the years to come. Thank you so much.
Before we turn to administration testimony, please be aware of the following administrative matters. If you are registered to testify, please listen for your name to be called. Witness names will be called in groups to facilitate council member questioning. Additionally, if you are testifying virtually via Zoom, council staff will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. Please be patient if you are not immediately unmuted. Each witness will be limited to two minutes. Please stop your testimony when the sergeant calls time. Your understanding of these procedures is appreciated as we ensure everyone has an opportunity to be heard today. As a reminder, everyone can submit written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov up to 72 hours after the conclusion of today's hearing. I will now administer the oath. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions? You may begin your testimony.
Hello, hello. Good afternoon, Chair Stevens and members of the Youth Services Committee, public advocate. I'm Susan. Yep. How's this? I'm Susan Haskell, Deputy Commissioner for Youth Services. I'm joined by Darrell Rattray, Deputy Commissioner of Strategic Partnerships, and our colleagues Valerie Mulligan, Deputy Commissioner for Workforce Connect, and Associate Commissioner Daphne Montanaz. We're also pleased to be joined by Mark Traeger, Director of Intergovernmental Affairs for the Department of Education. On behalf of Commissioner Howard and Chancellor Banks, thank you for the opportunity to testify today, our record-breaking summer of 2022. What started with planning and preparation many months ago turned into a wonderful success story for the city, DYCD, DOE, our providers, and above all else, our families and young people. As you know, on February 15th, Mayor Eric Adams announced a record 100,000 summer job opportunities for young people ages 14 to 24. Over 90,000 of these jobs and work-based learning experiences were available through DYCD's Summer Youth Employment Program, making it the largest number of opportunities in the program's 59-year history. We were pleased to be joined by Speaker Adams, Chair Stevens, and other elected officials to celebrate this historic moment. To recruit youth for the program, we prioritized low-income, justice-involved foster care, runaway and homeless youth, and New York City Housing Authority NICA residents. 91% of participants were from high-needs neighborhoods, including those most severely impacted by COVID-19, ensuring that youth most affected by the pandemic and its economic effects gained the work readiness skills they need to be successful in their education and career pathways. All 100,000 summer jobs promised by Mayor Adams were filled, including over 90,000 slots supervised by DYCD's network of community-based organizations. More than 18,000 work sites were recruited, which is also an all-time high. Placements were across public, private, and nonprofit employers, across a variety of sectors. Participants engaged with employers such as Microsoft, SL Green Realty, and Google. Members of Mayor Adams' Business Leadership Council hosted 470 participants at leading companies, including Accenture, JetBlue, and Paramount Global. At Google, 30 graduating high school seniors participated in Google's Computer Science Summer Institute. And at Mamamadi's Medical Center, participants conducted research in emergency medicine and shadowed physicians in every department from surgery to pediatrics. And at Johnson &amp; Johnson, SYP participants worked in the design studio for the company's pharmaceutical, medical device, consumer health, and enterprise sectors. More than 8,700 young people were placed at city agencies, including the NYPD, Parks Department, NICA, and Health and Hospitals. We thanked Chair Stevens for promoting placements with the offices of city council members for 119 youth. These were all great opportunities for young people to have a valuable summer work experience while encouraging them to explore careers in city government that can create a pipeline to fill essential city positions in the future. We provided an unprecedented number of enrichment events, career panels, and added opportunities to the SYP experience. For example, Mayor Adams hosted a healthy eating cooking demonstration at Gracie Mansion. On the last day of SYP, we rallied city agency interns to meet Mayor Adams on the steps of City Hall for an end-of-summer celebration. Young people were taken on tours, including bio labs at NYU Langone, Khan Edison Learning Center, Electric, Gas, and Steam Labs, City Hall, and the United Nations. We held a Day in the Life at Wells Fargo Virtual Event, where over 300 participants heard from different department heads about their work, the company's vision, and how to apply for an internship for youth or job. Youth also participated in FDNY and NYPD Career Days at training facilities, and we had a Women in Government Career Panel featuring First Deputy Mayor Lorraine Grillo, Deputy Mayor Sheena Wright, Deputy Mayor Maria Torres Springer, and Chief Advisor Ingrid Lewis-Martin. In addition to acquiring valuable work experience, young people received financial literacy training. Participants were given, given access to Visa-branded cards with fee-free store transactions and offered the opportunity to open a bank account to deposit the record $234.4 million payroll this year. While youth are encouraged to save money, we know that this money is spent directly in community, helping families pay bills and purchase school supplies. In early March, Mayor Adams, Chancellor Banks, and Chair Stevens announced that Summer Rising 2022 would offer a record 110,000 young people an opportunity to participate in Summer Rising, which offered K-8 students a blend of summer learning and enrichment opportunities to engage with peers, caring adults in their community, and experiences to explore skills and interests. We offered key improvements to the summer, to the program this summer, responding to input from stakeholders. For Summer Rising 2022, the city expanded the hours of service for middle-school students and included Fridays. We focused on students with disabilities and students in temporary housing, streamlined the enrollment process, identified program locations earlier than ever before, offered coaching, professional development, and TA opportunities, and launched a collaborative planning tool for DOE and CBO leadership onsite. We held bi-weekly CBO convenings to maintain open lines of communications and implemented a single Summer Rising Operations Guide for CBOs and principals. CBO programs offered an array of amazing enrichment activities, including STEAM, literacy, physical fitness, healthy living. For example, at PS 204 in the Bronx, Scan Harbor and Directions for Our Youth collaborated to provide young people with science and nutrition activities, which included exploring a worm bin, I got to see that myself, it was really cool, and their role in our environment, and discussing the benefits of kale, followed by making a healthy kale salad. NYPD supported Friends of Crown Heights at MS 395 in Brooklyn, facilitating a day of outdoor fun for staff and participants, including games, giveaway, and guidance. Sixth graders at the New School for Leadership and Journalism created Elephant's Toothpaste, working in groups to take measurements, make predictions, and discuss observations with support from SYP workers. DOE and DYCD are working collaboratively to collect and analyze feedback from Summer 2023. DYCD is working with Policy Studies Associates, who is connected with the DOE Evaluation Team. We will share our findings, which will be the result of program site visits, family and student surveys, CBO focus groups. In addition, Change Impact is convening stakeholder feedback into a new, into a Summer Rising playbook for the city to reflect on lessons learned and to inform Summer 2023. More than 112,000 students were enrolled in the program. 139 CBOs participated as Summer Rising providers. Approximately 32,000 students with IEPs enrolled in the program, and nearly 12,000 were students in temporary housing. We were pleased that on August 16th, U.S. Secretary of Education Miguel Cardona traveled to PS 7 in Elmhurst to highlight Summer Rising with Representative Grace Meng and Commissioner Howard. They toured the school and participated in a roundtable conversation with students and parents about the benefits of summer learning and enrichment programs. While it's too early to discuss plans for this summer in great detail, we're looking at what worked well and what needs to be improved this coming year. We look forward to working with you in the time ahead and offering young people high-quality summer experience. Thank you again for this opportunity to testify on our record-breaking summer. We appreciate your strong commitment to New York City's youth, and we'd be happy to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to also acknowledge Councilmember Aviles, who's also joined us here for this hearing. Well, hello. How are you guys doing? So I'll start with the questions. So Summer Rising Program providers experienced concern that DYCD did not communicate the programming model early enough to elaborate adequately planning. Is the agency addressing this issue? If so, how?
Well, I'd like to acknowledge that, you know, we believe summer programming should begin as, you know, as early as possible. And at the same time, we were really proud that we not only made improvements within Summer 2021, but did things better than ever in some cases. For example, the program locations are really important to CBO providers because it informs how they hire staff and it lets families, families know where programs are going to be. We were able to cite programs very early in the spring. We also launched the enrollment process in, much earlier than in Summer 20, for Summer 2021. And in, by mid-April, families were able to apply to our programs online. So I think we've, we've, we're proud that we were able to start many of the important factors, planning factors, earlier than before. And at the same time, we acknowledge we want to keep doing better and better.
So just, I just want to go back a little bit because one, I want to say yes. Obviously, we had a great summer, right? But there's still issues. But I, I, I want us to make sure we're answering the question and just around like, how's the agency addressing this? Because this is one of the things I was ringing the alarm about last year was that, yes, people at the top were talking, but that information was not being transmitted down to the people who are actually providing the program. So I would love for that answer to be, to, for that, that question to be answered because I think that is important.
Well, some of the things, well, first of all, we're here now. We're already like absorbing the findings from Summer 2022 and we're ready to start thinking seriously about, you know, what we can do to improve for Summer 2023. But in terms of that communication getting down to the site level, we did hold bi-weekly CBO with DOE and DYCD convenings every two weeks, starting, I think, March 2nd was the first one. We, and we continued that communication regularly throughout the launch of the program so that any developments or policy changes, any feedback we need. Providers always had an opportunity to share their feedback with us, giving us an opportunity to adjust, and in many cases, you know, we absolutely heard their feedback. So I, I felt, you know, again, we can always do better. We aim to start even earlier, but I think, generally speaking, starting that communication to the site level, March 2nd is something we feel good about.
So I, and I think, yes, we might feel good about it, but if that's the feedback we're getting from providers, I think that we need to think about that and adjust and figure out because even if you're saying that you've met every two weeks, I think that it's important that the providers are saying that's not enough and that's not what they wanted, or that's not helpful. So hopefully, we can think about what does that look like differently next year than this, moving forward. Would you talk us through the process of Summer Rising enrollment? How did this enrollment process compare to last year?
Yeah, to start, we, we approached enrollment differently this year, and we very much streamlined the process, centering family experience in enrollment. And some of the features of that streamlined process was that families were able to get nearly immediately a confirmation of the seat that they applied to so that, that they were informed quickly that they were, they were able to get a seat. And many of our sites did fill up quickly. We kind of know where those like high-demand locations are and we're, we're learning from that data and information. We, yeah, this, we feel like we, and we also started that again like many weeks earlier than we had in Summer 2021.
Oh, I was just going to ask, what was the reasoning behind taking the enrollment away from providers and giving it to DOE? And I know he was about to answer that, so go on, Mark.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Chair, for this very great, important question. And also, I'm going to begin by just thanking you and your committee and the members of this council and your staff for championing this issue from day one. Your support has been critical. And also, to the deputy commissioner's point, the earlier stuff gets prioritized and completed, the better planning for everyone involved. And also, someone who deeply, you know, is a former teacher and obviously a member of this body, DOE cannot do this work alone. So we are grateful to our partners at DYCD. We're grateful to our CBO providers, in addition to our amazing school communities. As to your question about the enrollment process and how it differed at this time from the year before, and I could speak from experience on that front. One of the concerns that we heard from the year before was the, if a parent had contacted their school leader or their parent coordinator to discuss, "How can we help enroll our child in the local school?" In the year before, there was an issue where, well, you had to go to, had to go to the website. That was not, and principals mentioned that they didn't really have access to that until, until later. They didn't have access to a roster, so to speak, as mentioned by the deputy commissioner. Planning was much more earlier on, earlier organized at this time. So a lot of parents turned to their parent coordinators, a lot of them turned to their school leaders and school, and their teachers to say, "Can you help us walk through the process?" Matter of fact, they pushed back the opening of the portal due to feedback from the school communities. They were going to open the portal originally during spring break, but because a lot of parents and families said, "Wait a minute," and, and school principals and parent coordinators said, "If you open it during spring break, families who might need, require, might require support from, from the school, from the school staff might not have access to it because folks are off during spring break." So they pushed it until after, after spring break, and that was the initial phase. The initial phase was basically saying, opening up the portal, allowing families to basically choose their school locations. Matter of fact, my understanding is that 86% of children who are not 12-month, with 12-month IEPs or not mandated to go to summer school were able to select their home district. Phase two was making sure that all kids with 12-month IEPs were prioritized for a seat. And phase three is that where they saw availability at the school level, they, they work with the CBO provider to determine, okay, is there availability here? Let's get kids enrolled here, even walk-ins and so forth. So that, it was really driven by feedback from the year before, where a lot of folks turned to their school communities. And we're not able to get kind of direct school support and school assistance. This time, what, what should happen and what continues to grow to happen is working in collaboration with DYCD and CBOs to make sure that we hear, we take intake from all kids and families and make sure that we support folks where they're at, whether they turn to a provider, whether they turn to the school. We need to meet, meet them where they're at.
Yeah, absolutely, and I agree. But it was just, it kind of didn't make sense, especially because CBOs and DYCD actually do recruitment well. So I didn't understand why we would take it from them and then give it to DOE, who actually is struggling with recruitment and enrollment right now. So it did not, like, for me, it was one of those things where it was like, "This is actually something we actually do well, so why are we taking it away?" So thinking about next year, how do we make this more of a collaborative effort? Because I don't think it should be one or the other, but how do we move forward to do this collaboratively? Because that's not what happened this summer. It was really, providers felt like they were at the mercy of principals and schools. And to me, that doesn't make sense, and it didn't feel collaborative. So my next question, and I guess this might be for you again. Summer Rising providers and principals described the COVID screening process as cumbersome and duplicative. Is there a plan to streamline and simplify it? That was one of the feedback we heard from like schools and principals.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. We obviously take a lot of our direction from our, from the Health Department, School Health. Any feedback to improve that process, we'll actually, absolutely take it. If there are examples from providers or schools that needed more help and support, please feel free to share that with me. I'll be happy to escalate that further.
Absolutely. So continuing around enrollment, providers reported that Summer Rising enrollment was a mess. After a family submitted an application through the D, to the Discovery DYCD portal, there was also a supplemental follow-up form. Providers couldn't get electronic signatures and had to scan such forms using Abercrombie programming. In addition, there were, they were released and information questionnaires, and there were all these forms completed, was placed on providers. Would you explain what accounts, what accounts for this? And what is the plans for this to be streamlined and simplified this process next year?
I think it's, I think it's fair to say we did make many improvements and we're still learning about the process. I think it's, I think it's fair to say we did make many improvements and we're still learning about the process. We, when we say we streamlined, we really did center families in the enrollment process here to make it as simple as possible. We've heard, you know, people say feedback, when it's like a challenging process, it's, it's a burden on, on families. But we, again, made, we, we kind of limited the information they needed to include in an application. We had translation services available and we tried to provide nearly immediate feedback. On top of that, a provider who's going to, you know, have responsibility for a child needs some additional information, including like health information, who's safe to pick up information. So we had a supplemental form. We made a choice not to include that upfront, just to keep the process super streamlined for people who were applying and acknowledging there'd be many weeks to be able to fill in that information. So we received this feedback. It was, it was a choice around keeping that initial process as streamlined as possible.
So could you explain why they weren't allowed to collect electric signatures and why they had to scan forms and, and, and add additional steps? If we were trying to streamline it?
You know, I'll have to get back to you on that. My memory was that electronic signatures, signatures were allowed. So I'll have to, let me look into that and get back to you.
All right, thank you. Providers reported that families that typically work with, the providers explained that families they typically work with were locked out of summer rising sites with their C B Os. Do you know what families did for their young people with the summer who were not allowed to, who were not allowed to be in summer rising?
I don't know the answer to that question. I think, you know, we, we launched the biggest summer enrichment program ever this year and, and still there were families, you know, it was heartbreaking to hear from families who didn't get a seat or didn't get the seat that they had hoped for. But I think we're moving in the right direction. We're so appreciative of the investment from this administration and with the council's support that we were able to make it so big and, and still, you know, there were families who were disappointed. We have to acknowledge that.
And so did we do any outreach to those families to kind of see or is there some type, was there any follow-up for folks who were like on waiting lists? Or we just?
Well, we try, I, I would have to get back to you on the details of this, but I know D Y C D tries to broadcast, like, summerizing isn't the only, you know, city operated opportunity. I know some other city agencies offer some, summer programs. And we try to always make those things readily available, both for teens, maybe who, who may have, if they had in the past missed out on a summer youth employment program or somebody in a summer enrichment program, we try to advertise other opportunities, always putting that as a priority around that late spring.
And what I could, Chair, if I might add, that one of the, I think also key differences this year compared to last year was that when a family was able to enroll their child into a summer rising site this, this time, they were able to, on average, complete the application form within minutes and also get real-time confirmation to their site. As opposed to last year, or the year, the year before, just because they went to the enrollment page doesn't mean that they're automatically enrolled at that particular school. They had to wait quite a while. That's why you, you heard reports and some concerns that some kids were sitting in auditoriums in the first couple of days to a week or so in the last school year because news was still kind of trickling down to, to the school communities. So this time, families were able to get real-time information responses as far as where, where they were going, as far as where their child was being enrolled. And speaking about waitlists, that's what we try to minimize, I think, this time. But if at the local school level where there were pockets, certain schools where there were very high demand and there was some natural attrition, some families who enrolled early on said, you know what, maybe this program is, maybe something else came up where they took their kid out from the program, where a slot opened up. That is where the D O E posted information on their website and worked with the local school communities and, and, and D Y C D to make sure families knew that they can enroll at that local particular school with outreach by that school community and, and that provider. So there's always more work to do, but this was one of the adjustments made from the year before, where families got real-time information about where their, where their kid was being enrolled, so they knew where they were going on, on day one.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. But also to just thinking about it, I know the Deputy Commissioner just mentioned that there, there are other programs that were going on in the summer. And so that's why I was asking around, well, did we like usher them to like community-based programs who were actually struggling with enrollment this year, right? And so how do we like connect folks to those programs? And, and for me, it's always thinking about how are we connecting the dots and what does that look like and what does that plan look like? Because a lot of talk has been about summerizing, but we still had community-based that was doing programming. So could you talk about what that looked like and how did we usher young people who needed support and services to those programs? Because they actually were struggling with enrollment.
That's a good question. We did absolutely respond to those inquiries from families who maybe missed out with the center-based programs. Thank you for like jogging my memory. We wanted people to know that we have community centers in, in NITRA developments and we have community-based programs, you know, compass enrichment programs funded. So we, you know, as we do, like I mentioned, every year in the spring, we try to make sure that alternatives are available for anybody who might, you know, miss out on a, on a D Y C D funded opportunity.
Thank you. Summerizing providers reported that they never received their participant I U Ps, individual education plans. Although the principal on duty was aware of the child's needs, providers were left out of the information loop. They had no access to such information unless parents notified them. Do you know why this happened and what is the plan to rectify this next year?
Thank you, Chair, for, for this very important question. So first, there are some legal constraints as far as who has access to a child's I U P. However, to your, to your, to your overall point, if there was an escalation, if there was a need for additional, let's say, power professional, and, and according to my numbers in terms of information here, there were a record number of powers actually hired to support kids during the summer program. Where there, where there was a, a need identified at the school-based level. Also, there was, just to give you further context, there were, there were meetings to discuss what accommodations were required between D O, D O E, D Y C D, at school-based staff and, and the C B O provider. Principals, of course, know who their kids are. They know the kids that they're being enrolled at their school. They know if certain staff are, are, are needed. Escalations were prioritized. Additional funding was put in place for, for schools to have power professionals. As, as mentioned, there was a, a record number of powers hired. Every school also had funding in place to have either a full-time social worker or counselor. Every school had funding in place to ensure that, and I want to give also a big shout out to our, I know this is, just to broaden the question, to our amazing like school food workers, our amazing school safety, everyone kind of to best, best support our, our children. But as far as, as far as kids with I U Ps, because of legal constraints, they can't share that with, with C B O staff. But principals can coordinate with, with other folks within the community to discuss if, if, if needs are, if, if a new need is identified, they escalate it, more money is put into the budget to hire additional powers to best meet the needs of the kids.
Yeah, thank you for that. But, you know, even on my tours this summer, and when we talk about power professionals, they were not there during the, the recreational portion, right? So they were not there and there was a huge struggle for the, you know, especially for some of the D seventy-nine sites, seventy-five sites, that they were, they were kind of just left on their own and not getting the same support that teachers got during the day. And so, yes, I am very clear that we're not allowed to like share I U Ps and do those things. But I do think that it is important that the providers get the same amount of support that teachers get and not just kind of just left to their own devices. And that's how many of them felt this summer. And we often feel that way because often they are not in the loop of like what's going on and we're at the mercy of the principal or the teachers because we just don't know. And then we have to get the information secondhand. So I think we need to figure out what that coordination looks like in, in a better way. And just, I want to make sure that I acknowledge Councilmember Riley and Councilmember Ose for joining us, who's joined the hearing. Summerizing providers reported that different program performing, performing the same work received different reimbursements, which causes inequality. What justifies this differential reimbursement rates?
I missed the beginning, the different, I missed the beginning of that question, the differential between?
Reimbursement rate. So we're talking about community-based versus school-based and the different rates that they received.
Well, to, I'll just say to start that we took stakeholder feedback about the price per participant, we call it, which is like the base price that people are funded for summerizing. And we offered a, a rate, you know, better than ever before. We, we paid elementary school, for, for elementary school seats, one thousand four hundred and fourteen, for middle school seats, one thousand three hundred and twenty. And we felt, we heard from providers that like, that they appreciated that we had given an, an increased rate for summerizing.
So we did not give an increase for community-based programs. So we understand that that provides inequalities amongst colleagues at that point.
Okay, now I understand, now I understand what you're saying, yeah. I think, you know, the, the attention to the summerizing rate was really based around many of these operational questions that you're raising that, that acknowledged that there's additional coordination and planning required for a summerizing program because it is a, it is a program in partnership with the Department of Education. And for that reason, we assessed, we assessed the, the summerizing rate individually.
So I just, I want to be clear. I ran community-based programming for almost fifteen years. We have way more responsibility. We are in charge of the building. We have to entertain those kids. Most of them are in NITRA developments that are leaking and all those things. So to say that they are doing more or in, or any of that, I think that that is a problem because they are actually working, if not harder, because they are solely responsible for the young people all day. So I think that that is, I just want to make sure I put that on record because we're, mm-mm.
I take your point. And at the same time, I'm just, I'm putting out there, what, what our process was for a new program that we began and identifying a rate for that really did acknowledge that, that coordination required with the principal in charge on the D O E side.
No, and, and I get that, but I think that that's part of the problem, right? Where it's this emphasis that if you're in a school, that you're doing a better job than people in, in the community base. And I know that's not what's being said, but unintentionally, that is what's being said. That people who are working in the school buildings are, are, at this point, being seen as more valuable than the people who are working in the community-based programs, and that's a problem. And so I have to make sure that is acknowledged in this space and in this conversation. Providers reported issues with the continual, continual of care between after-school and summer programs. Many of the after-school participants were not assigned to the same providers who also operated summerizing programs, even if they were in the same building. Children didn't know each other. They didn't know the program staff. There were even situations where after-school and summerizing providers were co-located in the same building, but for some reason, the students were assigned, assigned students were swapped. Would you explain what accounts for that and what is the plans for those to be addressed for programs in the future?
I think we heard, we heard from community-based providers early on in the enrollment process who were disappointed that young people that they served during the school year were not able to gain a seat in the summer. We, we definitely heard that feedback as well and we're taking that into consideration. But I want to come back again to the goals of the enrollment process we did launch was around centering like students of highest priority. We located, you know, programs in tree neighborhoods. We were very successful engaging students in temporary housing, students who require academic remediation and students with disabilities. So that was the approach that we took to enrollment this year. And I, and, and I think we were, we were centered around those families, not necessarily ensuring access to students who went to a particular school or participated in a program. So we have heard that feedback from community-based organizations and that wasn't, the focus was on, on fam, on families and on families with the greatest need.
Thank you. Why were academics and the recreational slash enrichment portion of the summerizing delivered at different and often far, far spaced sites, therefore amplifying transportation challenges? So this is asking about D seventy-five students, and I'll go back a little bit because it was a question before this. One of the things that I noticed and I heard from providers when I was doing my tours were that they had D seventy-five students who were located at one site for the academic portion, but then was bused to another site for the enrichment portion of the day, which caused a lot of disruptions and like the students had to settle down again and them being in a different environment. So can we talk about like why this happened and how do we prevent this from happening again? Because it was a lot of disruption, not only for the young people, but also for the providers.
Yeah, I'll welcome my, my colleague from Department of Education to weigh in on that. Yeah.
No, I, I, I really appreciate the Chair honing in on this issue because this, this is a very, very important issue. So it's my understanding, Chair, that there were seventy sites that were selected and prioritized to make sure that D seventy-five students had access to both academic and after-school enrichment within the same, within the same building. Where that, where that did not happen, I absolutely hear, hear your concerns and what, what that would mean in, in terms of issues, in terms of transportation, issues in terms of moving them to site. But I, I do know that there was an intentional effort to co-locate them to, to the extent which they could and over seventy sites were prioritized and selected to co-locate the D seventy-five students with the same school program where they had their after-school enrichment. But happy to look further into the issues that, in terms of the school communities that you visited that needed extra help and support and coordination.
Well, why have you, Mark? I have another question for you. So a question just around the, the I U Ps. If C B Os have a waiver signed by parents, can the I U Ps be shared with providers?
Chair, I'll, I'd have to check with legal on that. I, I just know from my teaching experience, there were, there are very strict rules about who could, who could see that I U P, but I'm happy to check with legal and get back to you on that.
Yeah, could I add to that?
Please.
You know, as a parent of a student with an I U P, I just want to echo that in addition to the legal barrier of D O E providing that to the C B O, it's actually not the most valuable tool that a C B O provider could use. I think the most important communication there is from the family to the C B O provider around accommodations. And that's part of that supplemental form to say like, here's what my child needs to be supported in the summer. And very often, what's the detail of an I U P is not necessarily the, the, the right tool. But there's nothing to stop a family from sharing that with the community-based provider. Although D O E can't do that directly, there would be nothing to, to prevent a parent from sharing that with, with the C B O provider.
Thank you. Providers reported that parents felt forced into D O E complimentary to what they felt summer activities for their children should be. Parents felt that summerizing could have been academic elements such as STEM activities, but integrating summer school isn't what community members want. In fact, many middle school children did not enroll precisely due to the built-in summer school component. Is there a plan to modify the program to be a more aligned with the community and families' wishes? Don't, hold on, answer my question.
We're taking feedback. We're taking the feedback. Really, our goal is to have a full-day program, which is like integrated academics and enrichment that provides like a full-day wonderful experience for young people. But we are taking feedback. And even late in the, in the spring process, we, we, we allowed for, on the both, the, the principal side and C B O provide side, for families to communicate if they wanted to either like come late to the program or leave early. But our, really, our goal was to provide a full-day program.
Yeah, and, and thank you, Commissioner and Chair. Thank you for this question. I think also, and I could speak to the spirit of this even from the year before to certainly now, I think the spirit behind the academic component was a recognition of the disruption to instruction that a lot of kids faced. And, and I, I'd argue that all of our kids have varying degrees of needs. Even if summer school was not mandated for you, our kids have varying degrees of needs. I think the spirit behind it was how to just make sure that we put on the table that there was instructional piece to it, but certainly hear you loud and clear on, on the, on the feedback to make adjustments moving forward to this process.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think some of that too goes into just that. People want to have camp too. School is, is a thing, right? But like camp also provides academics and support and all the things that you're speaking about. And I think that they, they both play a hand. But a lot of the providers and families I was out there was like, could we just have camp again? Because we're not interested in this because kids feel overwhelmed. So I think it's definitely one of the things we should definitely think about. I'm just going to, I'm going to jump to some S Y E P questions because Val is looking at me and she's like, I want to be a part of the conversation. So we're going to add her in. And before we do that, I'm going to acknowledge that Councilmember Williams just, also just joined us here. So on to S Y P. Don't worry, I'll be back to summerizing. I still have more questions. But like to spread the love. Well, Val, I'm sad this is the first time I'm seeing you. I haven't seen you in so long. We went from like speaking every day to like not seeing each other for a while. But let's get into S Y P. Providers reported that when a young person is selected by a lottery for community S Y P, the enrollment deadline is by midnight, which problematically became their need to shifts, to have staff willing to review the enrollment during their evening hours. The deadline should be instead the next morning. Do you plan to revise the enrollment process accordingly?
Hey, Councilmember, how are you? So it's a great question. Thank you for raising it. I, I, that's not feedback that I've heard a lot of, but I- I, I, that's not feedback that I've heard a lot of, but I'm absolutely happy you're raising it. It's something we can, we can look to, to move in general.
I heard that so much.
I'm so glad you're raising it, and you know, for sure, again, I, I say this everywhere I am, like providers, please, talk to us and let us hear that on the ground. We definitely have heard that the, the pace is really fast. Um, and, and the reason for that is because of the speed of SYEP. This year, we had to get ninety thousand young people enrolled, um, in a really short amount of time, and so there have to be deadlines. We know that moves it, but I think anything that makes it operationally easier for young people and providers to oversee the program, um, we're absolutely open to hearing. I think, uh, it's really important for us to do that, uh, to, to make the program move more smoothly, so thank you for raising it.
Yeah, I'm surprised that you guys haven't heard that, because that was like one of the number-one things that I heard around them. Because they are not allowed to do overtime and all this, they weren't being reimbursed for that, but like that was one of their number-one concerns that I heard. Is there a plan to use more innovative SYEP participant selection, um, other than a lottery moving forward?
So I think, you know, as we've grown the program, um, we have moved in the direction of more intentional direct recruitment. Um, this year, we expanded our career-ready portfolio to over twenty thousand slots. Those are slots that are school-based and really targeted towards, um, schools that DOE helps us select that have, um, you know, based on economic needs index, graduation rates and all that. We also expanded the number of slots targeted to, to specific populations. And so we are absolutely moving in that direction. Um, and, and I would say one day, you know, the dream would be for sure to move away from that, but I think we have to continue to do that incrementally. Um, for now, we're continuing to build on all those initiatives within the program that help us really reach young people that, that we want to reach the most.
No, I hear you, but I think we, we need to start thinking a little bit more innovative, because the lottery is part of the reason why. We have staff staying up to twelve o'clock at night, trying to input and get this data done, because we're using an antiquated system and thinking about how are we moving forward and being more, you know, innovative and, and creative. And I think that there's much more creative ways than just saying that we're doing a lottery, because at this point, it is a lottery, and it's weird. Um, providers reported that some of them were giving SYEP work site lists. Um, but why wasn't this the case for all sites? So I've heard that like some folks got like additional support around getting work sites, but there was a whole host of groups that said they had no support and did not get any. So could you talk about why that happened?
Uh, sure, so I think one of the real opportunities this year was that we got the funding really early. And, uh, that allowed us on my team, um, really under the leadership of Daphne here, to, to grow our employer engagement team and to really invest in, in what we can do there. But, you know, that is a, a team that didn't exist six, well, now we're in October, so ten months ago, but didn't exist before that announcement happened. Um, we're really proud of the progress that they made recruiting work sites and helping support providers. Um, and I think there's a lot of work to be done in this front, but this year, for sure, was like a historic move in the right direction towards DYCD having the capacity to do more of the employer recruitment. One thing we always hear from providers is that's one of the hardest parts of the job, and so we're really proud. I, I also have to shout out all of our partners, um, at, uh, you know, at City Hall, um, the entire city. All of our city agencies stepped up to host work sites more so than ever before. City Council, thank you to your leadership, I, I want to share this number because it's really awesome. Last year, we had thirty-one placements at City Council, this year, we had a hundred and nineteen. Um, that is amazing. Many of your colleagues here were, were the ones that hosted the most, so super excited about the movement there. And I think it's just one of those areas that there's always going to be room to grow and improve on how we work with providers to share work sites with them. But I, again, I think this year was a huge step in the right direction.
No, absolutely, I think that it was. But could you talk about like how did some get, get work sites and while, like how, how did you pick providers on who got work list and who didn't? And, and how was that chosen?
Yeah, I think it, um, I'll let Daphne speak to it for sure, but I think it, it varied based on location, based on when we looked at how many work sites providers had already recruited and the needs, um, I don't know, Zordi, do you want to say?
Yes, that's, uh, essentially the methodology. It was, uh, sharing opportunities, uh, based on employer location, employer needs. Um, we also, on the employer engagement side, uh, worked very intentionally with our providers in helping to build their own capacity around employer engagement. Uh, our team, uh, developed social media and digital marketing tools to help job developers as they recruited. Uh, we also engaged in SYEP Week for the very first time in the spring. That incorporated advertising and social media campaign, uh, to help recruit new employers. And as those new employers came in, our employer engagement team, uh, connected those opportunities with providers. Uh, we held several job developer, uh, open houses with our employer engagement team, and it was a, a learning community, uh, an opportunity to share best practices, um, and also an opportunity for providers to say, hey, I still need opportunities within this individual sector. Um, I have young people that are looking for an opportunity to explore healthcare, for instance. Are there any centralized opportunities? And that was an opportunity for us to, um, connect providers with available opportunities. But, uh, to Val's point, uh, this was a learning experience for us. We were so pleased at the response by, uh, the New York City, uh, community to take part in the large expansion. Um, and the lessons learned will help us, uh, continue with those efforts next year.
Thank you. Um, and so I know you, you gave us the, the numbers for council, and shout out to my colleagues for stepping up and taking interns. And I'm excited to double that number next year. Um, but could you tell me, do you have the breakdown for, um, how many students were placed in city agencies, um, throughout the, um, SYEP program and throughout the city? And was there increase?
Oh, yes, this is an area we're really excited about. Our colleagues across city agencies stepped up. We had over eighty-seven hundred placements at eighty-two city agencies. Um, and those agencies, it's almost double where we were last year for context. Those agencies included, um, parks, CUNY, NITRA, um, every NYPD precinct hosted SYEP participants this year. They had a huge orientation for them and added a lot of wraparound services, NYPD Career Day. Um, DYCD hosted almost fifty participants, which was something really exciting for me. I think my colleagues here know that I emailed them approximately seventy-two times to say, how many are you taking?
That's what I did.
Um, so this was some, uh, an area where we made tremendous progress. And I also want to say that our city agency partners didn't only host themselves, but they helped us reach out to their vendor networks. Um, for example, SBS connected us to bids, to MWBEs, um, we worked with DOT, we worked with, across all of our agencies to really expand what they did. DIFTA made a huge commitment to putting our young people in senior centers. Um, so, uh, this is an area that I think we made, we really cracked it this year and, and made huge progress.
Love it, love to hear it. Um, so I know at the, at the beginning, um, the, the Deputy Commissioner made in her state, opened a statement, she talked about like opportunities that were afforded to like specific, um, interns. Um, but can you talk about how SYEP, um, ensures that equity across all experiences is happening? Um, you know, I heard some of the trips that they took and the mayor had some events and things like that. But what does equity look like among, um, across the programs with young people?
Yeah, this was something that we really newly focused on this year. Um, we, you know, and because it was new, I think there, there's a lot of room to grow. But we're really excited about the fact that we were able to engage employers and city partners in a new way to host enrichment events. Um, you know, this year, it was really looking at who we could recruit, what opportunities we could develop, and then looking to providers who had young people who are available to participate. But I definitely think as we build out what we're calling, you know, our enrichment opportunities around SYEP, that we want to grow those, um, maybe do more virtual events or events that could host a lot more young people so that, um, you know, to your point, it is equitable and every young person who participates in the program has an opportunity to do one of these really awesome enrichment events that we're working on developing.
Providers and advocates reported that contract, oh wait, that's the wrong one, I'm sorry. One second. I'm gonna turn it over to my colleagues who have some questions.
Um, Councilmember Riley.
Thank you, Chair Stevens, and good afternoon, everyone. Uh, it's always a pleasure to see my former colleague, Councilmember Mark Trager, and the rest of the panel. Um, just a few questions, I think I come to this as a parent for summer-izing. Uh, some of the concerns or maybe recommendations, um, I know a lot of the parents, um, at the site that my, my daughter was at were inquiring, um, that they didn't know who the workers there were. Uh, so I know when, um, Chair Stevens and I went to the site, they suggested that maybe they could put up a board in the beginning that kind of has a picture of all the workers there, so you could kind of have a better sense of who was actually working with our child on a daily basis, so that's just a recommendation. Uh, two, I know something was talked about, and I'm, I'm gonna say this for my seven-year-old, she was very displeased uh, that she felt like she was just inside all day. Um, there was no activities going on outside, um, and we don't, we don't have anything set up for them to take trips as well. Um, I know something I spoke, I spoke with somebody, I forgot who I spoke to, but they said that we would have to start early with sending the bus, um, getting buses to take the kids from certain locations. And I think that's something that we could start discussing now in the council and seeing how much money that would be next year, so we can make this, uh, a more fulfilling, uh, summer for our youth. Um, so that's second. Uh, so I'll just start with that and then I'll go to, um, SYEP.
I'm gonna ask my colleague, um, Daryl, to, yeah, to talk a little bit about other trips. Um, really good point and good feedback, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Riley. So we, we did encourage providers to start planning early with their trips. Um, the mayor set a charge to treat the city as a fun, learning classroom environment. Uh, so we also curated some of those trips. Um, everything from, um, the New York Liberty had a camp day. We had over seven thousand participants at that camp day. Um, the Brooklyn Cyclones had a game at one point, we had a couple hundred participants able to attend. The Bronx Zoo every Friday hosted hundreds of young people from summer-izing. All in all, we had hundreds of young people, thousands of young people at the aquarium, botanical gardens across the city, museums, movies were, were a big hit actually, bowling, um, also learning environments like the zoo as well, and fun environments like amusement parks. We did hear some feedback around transportation with some groups where, um, yeah, and I guess they hit a, a bottleneck on securing buses. But we also worked with our colleagues at DOE to identify some of their buses for trips, um, that were used for that nature as well. But we, we did encourage folks early on, um, to plan and activate on trips and field trips.
Okay, um, and to SYEP, uh, real quick. Um, I, I love to see the providers that you have, the private partnerships with like Google and Microsoft. I think that gives our youth opportunity to get into techn, technological, um, space as well. Um, I just saw that they, I don't know if I missed it, but I saw there was only thirty, um, people in Google. Is there any, um, talks to kind of expand that, um, for next year? And are we doing more private partnerships so we could kind of give our youth a taste on what's going on in the private, you know, sector? Um, yeah, so.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember, for that question. Um, this is something that we are hyper-focused on. I definitely want to let Daphne speak to some of the efforts around that, but we've been trying to build our private partnerships for years and made huge strides this year, and, and for sure, plan to continue to focus on it.
Yes, absolutely. A part of our efforts to increase employer engagement this year was a more centralized outreach strategy, uh, in, in coordination with the mayor's office, Deputy Mayor Sheena Wright's office, and the mayor's office of, uh, youth employment. Um, and we were focused on, uh, four main pillars, which were the private sector, corporate and large businesses, small businesses, nonprofits, and of course, city agency involvement. In terms of, uh, the corporate sector, uh, we held a few convenings with the mayor's business leadership council. Um, and from those companies, we were able to source, uh, nearly five hundred placements at companies such as Cushman and Wakefield, Goldman Sachs, Mount Sinai, SL Green, um, Paramount Global, for instance. We also worked very closely with Rebny on real estate and, and their companies as well.
I was just gonna ask about that.
Yes, yes, uh, so we're really thrilled to see their partnership, uh, uh, come on board, and we look forward to building upon, uh, those efforts.
Thank you so much, thank you, Chair.
So I just, I just wanted to, to jump in around the trips and stuff, because one of the issues and concerns that I heard, um, was one, because we provided transportation for, um, students with disabilities this year, if they did get a bus, they had to be back by three, which obviously was challenging when we had, you know, the school portion or the educational portion in the day. So I think also when we're thinking about this, which is why folks are saying they prefer camp, because it actually affords them an opportunity to now take what they're learning in day, to actually have experiences. And so I think about when we're thinking about planning, those things should be taken into consideration, because that's what ends up happening. You can't really go on a trip and be back by three if you're ending, um, the academic portion at twelve. Like there's no room for travel, and having one day a week, I, sometimes just isn't enough. So I think it needs to, when we're thinking about our planning, and which is why I'm having this hearing so early, so we could be thinking about and working through those challenges moving forward for next year, and thinking about how do we move towards camp and not so much, you know, class.
If I may, I'm sorry, Chair. Um, when you're picking providers, do you get any youth input on possible providers or corporations that they will possibly want to work with, uh, for summer youth?
So, ask that again, so you're saying, you're asking, do we?
So like if, for youth, like Google, Microsoft, so say if they want to work for a company like, I don't know, Meta or Tesla or something like that, um, do you get their feedback or how would they give you feedback, um, if they wanted to work with those companies and wanted the city to partner with those companies for summer youth?
How do our CBO providers give us feedback on how? Um, for sure, I mean, a huge part of what the CBOs bring to the table is relationships that they have with their providers, so it's absolutely part of the role that they play to, to, um, to develop those relationships themselves. But then, when we develop those relationships, we work with providers who are excited about the opportunity and, and try to find the providers who have young people who they think would be good fits for those opportunities. So that's definitely a part of our, our practice.
But correct me if I'm wrong, um, Councilmember, are you asking, how are they getting feedback from young people about work sites? Because I think that's what he's asking, how are we getting feedback from young people about the work sites that they want to work at?
Before they're enrolled or after? Yeah, so we, I mean, it's a core part of what DYCD does, that all of our program is, is informed by Youth Voice and Choice, that we say that all the time, and, um, we have a regular process in the SYEP team of surveying all of our, all of our, uh, participants after the program and in the middle of the program. In the middle of the program is how's it's going, how do you feel your skills are, how's your relationship with your employers? We even ask questions about, have you developed meaningful relationships with adults? Um, that's one of the most important things we hear about what SYEP can provide. We collect all of that feedback at two points throughout the program. Actually, just last week, our whole team sat down to start to sort through this year's feedback.
Now turn it over to Councilmember Ose for questions.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Chair Stevens, for your leadership. I mean, your expertise at each of these hearings is amazing. So thank you so much for, for leading another wonderful hearing, and hello to everyone from the administration and our city agencies. Uh, so the first question that I have is in regards to, I guess, I know that in twenty-twenty-one, um, some of our SYEP providers, um, you know, had issues with delayed payments, uh, for the work that they did of the year. Um, in terms of, you know, the, the additional funds that the mayor allocated towards SYEP and the expansion of the program, um, how did your agencies change, uh, your operations in terms of, uh, making sure that providers were, were, were getting paid um, at, at, you know, the timely fashion?
So I, I can start, and for sure, my colleagues across the board can weigh in, you know. This is an issue that our entire agency is, is very focused on. We definitely acknowledge that there were challenges, especially in twenty-twenty-one, when all of our programs were expanding really quickly. Um, and for sure, um, this year, we had the same concerns about the, the massive expansion. But I will say the entire agency over the last several months participated in initiative to clear the backlog to the best of our ability that we had. We made a lot of progress on that initiative. Um, I think there's still work to do, but, um, you know, DYCD is really proud of how far we've gotten, and we're definitely, um, continuing to work internally on all of our processes. Um, and for sure, our, our echo and our fiscal teams are, are more equipped to speak to the details of that, but we've been working collaboratively, collaboratively with them on the program side to continue to share the feedback loop from the providers, so, thank you.
And, uh, I'm not sure if you have the data yet from this past summer, but were you hearing reports from providers that they were not receiving payments? that they were not receiving payments on time?
On the SYEP side, you know, I think we did a really good job clearing last year's backlog and it wasn't as much of an issue this year. I'm not sure how my colleagues on the Summer Rising side feel.
Yes, we absolutely heard that as a challenge. Valerie is right, like our agency is really focused on, I mean, the whole city frankly is, has, has a concerted effort to improve the contracting process. I'm pleased to say we are way ahead this year of where we were last year. And still we have a long way to go. So we will just continue to find ways to be innovative and streamline the process. There are some ideas already in the pipeline for how to do better even in upcoming contract amendments. So it's a really good question.
And is this something that you collect data on and it's public information in terms of the progress being made when reimbursing these providers?
I don't know. I'll have to cut back to you on that. It could be to Valerie's point, like that our contracts team has data we could share with you. It's a good question.
Awesome. And another question that I have is, this is more personal to, I guess, the, the work that I did in my office this summer. We, you know, opted into the SYEP program so that we could have some interns and they were wonderful. But we did receive 16 of them, which was a large amount of SYEP and young folks to have in our, in our office this year. And I know that, you know, in discussions with, with our providers, you know, it turned out that they just received a lot of people and accepted a lot of people into their program, especially with the additional, you know, amount of money that was allocated towards this, this program. And obviously, you know, going into next year, I think our discussions that we're going to have with these, these providers is going to be, you know, we can only accept a couple. But what are your agencies doing in terms of, and I'm guessing that, you know, my case this summer was not an isolated case, in terms of these providers that, you know, are accepting as many, you know, SYEP or young people as, as they can and not really having much for them to do slash places for them to go?
Yeah. So first, thank you. I think you're one of the biggest contributors to our SYEP placements on city council. So tremendously grateful for your support of the program and for hosting our young people. I mean, I think I would go back to what we were talking about earlier in terms of the city's coordinated and centralized employer engagement efforts. We absolutely know that one of the biggest hurdles to expanding this program is identifying really awesome work sites. We, we know our providers are really good at doing that, but as we grow, we've got to continue to support them in doing more. And that's why I think I would just lean into the fact that we're building a really strong employer engagement team to do that work.
Thank you so much. That's all for me.
Now we're gonna turn it over to Councilmember Williams for her questions.
Hello. The first question I have is in reference to the providers and advocates reporting problems with how DYCD interacts with them, particularly lack of clarity, inadequate communication, delays in responding to providers' concerns and issues. What is being done to better support youth providers?
I think if I, your, your question is generally just how do we do a better job communicating, coordinating, and supporting with our funded providers? It's a great question. It's something we, we put a lot of attention to, specifically thinking about Summer Rising. I think we've done more stakeholder engagement with this program. I think because of its sheer like scale and the newness of it than ever before. And it's been extremely valuable to get feedback. I hope that providers would acknowledge that we do, we have been making changes to the program as it involves in response to their, to their input. As I mentioned earlier to Chair Stevens, we had regular CBO convenings. At multiple points, we had our provider convenings, but we also had like a CBO work group that involved DOE and City Hall. And we had a comment box, we had a Summer Rising email, we had coaching sessions and, and as many platforms as we could to make their, our interaction with them as informative as, as possible. We're def, we're open to more ideas about how to keep that communication flowing and we want to continue to improve that process.
Okay. Do you know if there are any SYEP providers in like the southeast Queens community? Because I don't think there are, but I'm not all the way sure.
Let us, let us get back to you on that. I'll look through our list.
Okay. So I just wanted to note that while I loved and appreciated all of my SYEP interns, none of them came from the community. They all traveled very far. I know there were some providers in the past that were sort of locally based. And when I say locally based, they don't have to be in my particular council district, but in like the greater southeast Queens community. And I don't think that they got a contract or have had contracts. And so a lot of the students that are coming into the program don't live in the community and definitely want to make sure that folks who live in my council district have opportunities, which actually leads to my next question, which is around the lottery system. Actually just came from the New York City Equity Summit being put on by the administration, the mayor's office of equity. And sometimes I think we use lotteries as a way to say, everyone has a shot. It's a lottery system, but that's like not equitable, right? It doesn't really speak to equity. It doesn't really speak to like drilling down to our young people who probably need summer jobs the most. And so wondering if you all have looked at other systems and tools that isn't simply a lottery system?
Yeah, thank you so much for that question. It's a really important one. I think over the last many years, we have actually really intentionally moved to expand the number of slots that are done via direct recruitment outside of the lottery. We have massively grown all of these programs. One of the key ways we do that is through the Career Ready Portfolio, which, just to give you a sense of scale of how fast we've grown that, last year we had about, I think it was 12,000 to 13,000 placements in that program in around 90 schools. This year we were in 226 schools. And those schools are selected in collaboration with DOE based on Economic Needs Index, based on graduation rates, post-secondary rates. So that is one of the ways that we really intentionally put slots into communities that we know need them the most. I also want to share a huge change that we made this year to the lottery in terms of how we work with NYCHA youth. So we have always had targeted programs in NYCHA developments that were directly recruited outside of the lottery if you lived in MAP developments. This year we actually expanded that if you applied through the lottery but lived in NYCHA building, you got priority in the lottery. And so we were able to grow the number of NYCHA participants selected through the lottery in the program. Overall, we reached 13,300 young people. It's an increase of over 3,000 from last year. So we're absolutely moving in this direction. I also am incredibly proud of the fact that over 90% of the enrolled youth live in high poverty neighborhoods. Because of where we're placing our providers, because of the way that they do their recruitment, we're really confident in saying that we are making huge strides forward toward making SYEP available to young people who need them the most. So I really do appreciate the question. I think we're totally aligned in terms of how we're thinking about how we have to move the system.
Okay. And just to confirm, you'll let me know about the providers in the larger southeast Queens community?
You got it.
And also I would love to know if you have any data on the students that are coming from the larger, and this could be between the speakers, council district, Councilmember Brooks Powers and I are, are in the Career Ready Portfolio Initiative and any other programs that are pipelines into SYEP or some of the other initiatives and programs you have.
Yeah, we will absolutely. We could follow up with you and get you all the data about what's going on in your community.
And I just wanted to say thank you because I know I reached out to you like the first day of Summer Rising about some issues that we were hearing. So I wanted to just thank you for your responsiveness and working with us to address the issues we were having.
Next, we'll turn it over to Councilmember Aviles for questions.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you Chair Stevens. Thank you for all the work that you've done to get 100,000 of our students certainly into SYEP and, and also Summer Rising program. Of course, the, the largest complaint I've received is there's never enough seats. And parents who are just so disgruntled that, you know, they just missed it. Somehow they missed this incredible opportunity. So I think in the vein of continuing to expand these services, I'm totally in for universal, universal after-school, universal employment for kids all year long and not just summer and expanding it as much as possible. In terms of Summer Rising in particular, we know that there wasn't an ability to, to select a specific site and a provider, which basically was kind of the luck of the draw. And that was probably one of the largest complaints that I received from parents in our district, that their children were traveling to all different places and when there was a site that was so near to them, they didn't get selected for that site. Can you, can you explain to us why this was the case and, and how to, how can we address this?
Yeah, I'll start. And Mark, you can please add anything. But one of the things that we really did well in streamlining the process is, is create like an easy process for parents to sign up and a very direct like confirmation of their site. So within that system, a family was able to select the school and the provider within that school if they wanted to go to a specific program. And their response was directly to the application in that program. So, so we did offer families, centering families in this process, a, a, the ability to directly apply to the program of their choice. That was a priority for us. And I think the feedback that you're hearing may have been from families who weren't able to secure a spot in their first choice program and picked maybe a second or third choice program in a different location.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you, Councilmember, for, for this important question and for your leadership on this and many other issues. So I, I want to confirm that, that, that this, this year, this time, families were able to not only select the, the school location of their choice, but also the program, the CBO program within that school community. There was also a mechanism within the site to have translation available for the language which they, they spoke in or read. And even the confirmation message which they received was also in the language that they selected in terms of applying for, for that program. As compared to the, to the year before, even if you applied to the, to the site, onto the website, didn't guarantee that you actually had a seat in that program. This time, within, within five minutes or so, you were able to confirm right then and there that you had a seat in that particular school community. Thank you.
Thank you. I think in terms of, I know one of the areas that you mentioned in your testimony that you focused on were children with IEPs and children in temporary housing. And obviously, I mean, I don't know what the 32,000 IEP children enrolled is a reflection of like what percentage increase from the last year. I want to say, is it 100% increase?
I don't actually have that data in comparison to 2021. We'd be happy to get that to you. I can tell you it was a much greater targeting focused on students with disabilities this year. So we'd be happy to look into that and get back to you.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, without, without knowing the specifics, I think it's a substantial increase from the year before. And I had, unfortunately, as I stepped out, I had heard Mr. Trigger mention an increase in having powers also available, which was another, another particular problem. I just, I'd love to understand maybe the geographic spread of these students. I mean, the, the, the markers that you mentioned, 139 CBOs, you know, the 32,000 IEPs enrolled in the school, 12,000 children in temporary housing, without knowing, you know, obviously identifying markers. It would be beneficial to help us understand what does that look like throughout the city and in neighborhoods? And also even, even more specifically in terms of the CBO partners, how many of the CBOs are new partnerships? How many of them are like, you know, the top five agencies that seem to serve everybody across the city? I'd love to understand in more nuance what that looks like for our students. I'm way out of time. I probably didn't even make it through any of my questions. But in terms of, in terms of, I'm sorry, back to the children with, with disabilities, can you tell us what, what the accommodations of the programs that you were able to run actually look like? And also, did you notice ongoing unmet needs that you want to plan for in the future?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. And also, I could say pleased to be joined by the education chair, Rita Joseph, as well. Great, great, great to have you. Thank you. See, collaborative effort, Chair. But Councilmember, thank you for, for raising this. So it's my understanding that principals, they're, they're, they had access to the roster earlier this year. They were able to see. And as mentioned also, as part of phase two of the enrollment process, children with 12-month IEPs were automatically given prioritization in terms of placement. So they, they had an idea already of what needs were identified earlier. There was an accommodation process. There were ongoing meetings between DOE, DYCD, school-based staff with providers in terms of what additional needs would have to be identified and escalated. As mentioned, there were, and we'll, we can get back to you on, on figures, but there was a record number of powers hired this summer to work, to work in summer school. Whether areas where, as Chair Stevens pointed out, that we can do better, we'll always have to acknowledge that there are areas we have to do better. But it's my understanding that every school had funding prioritized if they needed additional support staff to better meet the needs of kids. I'll give you an example. If there was a walk-in as part of phase three of the enrollment process, if there was availability in a particular school community and a child enrolled who had an IEP, had a certain need, there would be an escalation process to make sure that they prioritize funding for that school to hire, to hire a paraprofessional to, to, to best meet, meet the needs of the kids. So that was, that process was not as smooth as last, the year before. Certainly, there's always room for growth, but there was funding put in place and prioritized for schools to hire additional support staff as they became aware of these needs. And there were ongoing accommodation process meetings between DOE, DYCD, with the providers and school-based staff.
So was there, I appreciate that there was funding available. So what kind of needs were, what did that funding meet at the time? And, and were there any identifiable areas that there are still gaps in that we need to address?
Thank you, Councilmember. My understanding is that there, there were escalations in terms of needing additional paraprofessionals. Funding, again, was, was prioritized. Whatever needs came our way, superintendents, other folks were, were made aware that funding was put in place. But my understanding is that there were some escalations in terms of paraprofessionals. I can get back to you about the other staff positions that, that we became aware of.
Great. I'd love, I'd love just specifics around what they found. Funding available for general needs is interesting, but doesn't quite tell where the trends are and really what the need on the ground is. In terms of, excuse me, what was the process around transportation, early dismissal in Summer Rising?
I'm not sure. Can you say more about your, the early dismissal part? So I'll, I'll, I'll ask my colleague Mark to respond about the transportation for students eligible for, for students with disabilities eligible for transportation. But I also want to add that students who were, you know, far enough away and eligible for a MetroCard were all, you know, supplied with MetroCards for Summer Rising, which is, which is an exciting development.
Thank you, Councilmember. Were you referring to early dismissal? Just, just, I'm just trying to?
Yeah, sorry about that. I guess I'm interested in particular the children who are far away, generally District 75 students, who had assignments in different places. So this would imply bus transportation.
Right. And, and so there was an intentional effort this year to co-locate over 70 sites with, within D-75 existing programs to minimize exactly what you're referring to as far as whether children have to then, you know, get transportation to another site. There was much more of an intentional effort to do that this year than, than, than the year before. With regards to the overall transportation, there were certainly operational and contractual restraints in, in terms of beyond the 3:00 p.m. hour. But within the D-75 community, I could tell you this time, Councilmember, that there was much more of an intentional planning coordination to make sure that we minimize the extent that we could having D-75 kids move around. Because to your point, that is, that is a well-recorded issue, both during, not just during summer, but also during the course of the school year as well.
Yeah, go ahead. Just one more question. Just jumping. Just one more question, just jumping to SYP related to transportation. Are SYP students offered MetroCards during the summer?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So this year, for the first time, I think, at least in my memory, we were funded to provide MetroCards to every SYP participant who was working in person. We're really excited about that opportunity. It went really well this year. It's something we advocated for really hard. So this year, we were able to provide MetroCards and we, we partnered with our community-based organizations to distribute them.
Kudos, thank you. That's super important. I had, I had a SYP student coming from College Point all the way to Sunset Park, an hour and a half on the train every day. So just wanted to, actually, maybe close to two underscore, Councilmember Williams' point around looking at how far students are actually traveling to their sites. I, I was dismayed that we received no students from our particular area. So I'd love a further, a closer look at, at what it actually looks like. I would never be able to be Councilmember all say's office and have 16 SYP students, but aspiring, but bravo to the team. The MetroCards are so, so important for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'd just like to second that too. I, I did not have as many SYP participants as I wanted. Like I felt like I should have had much, much more. But also too, my SYP participants were not from the community, a lot of them did have to travel. So I think we should definitely be looking at that as well. And I believe we've been joined by the Chair of Education, Rita Joseph, my partner in crime this summer, who we had a lot of conversations with because of this joint partnership. So we also worked in partnership. So I believe she has a few questions.
Thank you, Chair. Always a pleasure to partner up with you. Good afternoon, all. A few questions I have. For some reason, when I visited some of the sites, there were sites with one provider. While there were sites with clusters, can you please tell me, how did you come to that decision that the sites were not distributed equally among providers?
The way, I'll just say a little bit about the process for how we're, we cite programs. We, we worked with nearly, we had nearly 700 individual programs in the, in the summerizing sites. And, and you're right, like in some cases, it would be a single provider and in some cases, multiple providers. We, you know, we, we have existing summer enrichment contracts and we kind of build summerizing around that infrastructure. So the first thing we're doing is, you know, there are programs that work all year round in those home schools. And then there are programs that work year round in a different school, but are relocated to a summerizing site, so we can add seats. And in some cases, we want to add a grade band. Maybe it's an elementary school building, the elementary is in their home school, but we want to be able to serve middle school students at that site, so we'll add that, one of the middle school programs. And then in some cases, we need to go even beyond that with capacity. So we would have another provider program coming in to increase the, if that's a very high demand location, it's a big building with a lot of capacity to serve students, then we would add, add seats to that site for, through a new provider, through a different provider.
Did you guys have the opportunity to make sure that the providers were talking to each other, that they were on the same page?
We put a lot of energy into that and we introduced, thanks to Department of Education, we introduced the collaborative planning tool this year and we want to continue to put emphasis on that. That tool was designed to be, to be a vehicle for the principal in charge and the CBO leadership from each of those CBOs in the buildings to come together and say like, what are schedules going to look like? What, how are we going to share the space? What activities are, are we doing together? And outline some of those, some of those factors of the program. And we also offered onsite coaching. Some partnerships are stronger than others, some are just developing and they need a little extra support. So we, we, through a consult, we offered coaching for that, for that project if, if CBOs needed more support. And we want to continue along that path, acknowledging this is a partnership program and, and the stronger the partnership is, the stronger the, the program will be.
Question, any of you guys visited any of the summerizing sites? What did you see? Because when I visited one site and it was pure chaos, I walked into a building and I was supposed to be there for 15 minutes. I was there for two hours troubleshooting. So I hope that summerizing is beginning to plan the day after summerizing ended and not in January, so you can troubleshoot a lot of those. I saw students that were, had IEPs in a room with 20 other students. That's out of compliance, right there. They're mandated, needed. You had, I went to sites where they didn't have enough powers. You had a shortage, I know there's a shortage across the city for, for, for staffing, but I, I'm on the ground and like Councilmember Althea Stevens, we're hands-on councilmembers. You don't tell us, we show up. We want to make sure the work is being done. That's how I was as an educator for 22 years and that's how I am as a councilmember. So that doesn't change. So when I visited some of the sites, that's how I saw like five CBOs in one building and I didn't see collaboration, everybody was doing their own thing. So I think that's one of the things you might have to really coach in on how you share the space and how do you share the resources and the students and the work that you do? Or else, summerizing will, you will have defeated the purpose.
I just, I really appreciate that comment. I, we want to put more attention on the collaboration and we share your approach in terms of like, you need to be onsite to seeing that directly. I, I went to a dozen or two sites myself and I know my colleagues did too, and I, I didn't see anything that looked like chaos. I saw a lot of amazing work going on and good collaboration. I, I know it wasn't perfect and there were spots where there were challenges, but I'm also really proud of the way DOE and DYCD worked together to address issues that were on the ground. We had a very tight escalation process where communication went out to senior leadership and those situations were addressed immediately. So I feel badly that you saw that and I look forward to bringing you to summerizing sites next year, so you have a better experience.
No, the, the experience was necessary in order for you to perfect it. You understand? That experience had to happen in order for me to say, hey, you got to work on this, you got to work on that. Chair, I got one more question. That's my partner in crime. So, summerizing provided reported that principal could decide whether participant were allowed to opt out of summer school component, but not providers. Why were only principals given that discretion?
My, my understanding is really, again, we planned a full day program. It was on the family, what we introduced, hearing feedback about, hey, I don't, my kid's not going to get there till later in the day, my kid wants to leave earlier in the day, was that was the family's choice. And if the family would put in writing and, you know, bring it to the program, that they could amend the schedule for their child. We, we were not, we were not encouraging that because we really wanted, we, we believe in the strength of like the full day experience, but we did make accommodations hearing that feedback and that was really the family's choice, not the CBO or the principal, but a parent to, to communicate that to the program.
So why wasn't that given, wasn't that option given to providers? Because I spoke to many providers and they were like, that was not given to them, that was never said. And only principals were allowed to make that decision and that is a huge problem.
I think that's one of the things that we can improve in terms of communication. It was definitely not a policy that we implemented that was only for principals or only for CBOs. It was definitely a parent choice. We had, another strength we had this year that we'll continue to build on is a single operations guide. And that was updated throughout the summer with any policy change and this change was communicated in that guide, understanding there's a lot going on in summer, sites are busy, not everybody gets a chance to recheck. We had, as I mentioned, meant multiple touchpoints with providers where we tried to emphasize this, but it was introduced not maybe on day one of the planning and enrollment session, a little bit later, as we started to hear feedback. So we'll communicate that even more strongly as we figure out what, what our plans are for '23.
Why, why was the last minute enrollment at the front desk was happening? Because I remember I, clearly I dropped my son off at summerizing. That's how I know when something is good. My kid participated in public school, I have a public school kid. And when we showed up at the school, they allowed the front desk registration and that principal was overwhelmed. At one point, she was giving out tickets as if I was at a raffle, like you got to hold on to your ticket because you pre-registered. So she can figure out 300 families in front of her. And I think that's something we, we got to look into as well. And that was one of the things I met with Mark on, language access, not everybody has internet. What are the options for parent to register? I, I serve, I represent a huge immigrant community that may not have access to Wi-Fi, cannot sign on. So I think maybe in, based on the school, having parent coordinators get involved in enrolling kids from the schools will also alleviate what I saw at my son's school. Thank you, Chair.
Oh, thank you, Chair, and then thank you, Chair Stevens as well, because I clearly remember the feedback that you, you gave and Chair Stevens gave, which was very helpful and important and timely, in real time. So folks watching the hearing know that this council is definitely for real. They were visiting sites, gave us real-time feedback, we had to make adjustments accordingly. There was an enrollment issue that I remember you had escalated to us as well. But I, I do want to center the piece with regards to centering the family, because as mentioned earlier, Chair, this, this time around, families were able to, and the website, which they, they was able, they were able to translate into their, into their native language, the confirmation email was into native language. The parent coordinators working with their schools were supposed to be equipped to make sure that they provide support to families. Matter of fact, the registration period for, for the summerizing was moved not during spring break, but after spring break for that very reason. So slots wouldn't get kind of gobbled up during, during the vacation period where if extra families needed help, need help and support. Even family feedback shaped in terms of what accommodations we were making even around transportation restraints or constraints during summer. In terms of also many MetroCards that were issued to kids who needed transportation help, but were not, was not on their IEP. Over 8,000 rideshare trips were made available for families as well. There is certainly, there's certainly more work to do, but I think getting, centering family feedback compared to the year before, to this year, was very, was very key. And to the issue, Chair Stevens, which you had flagged as well during the course of summer, as far as there were children who wanted to go into the after-school enrichment portion, that's, that's critical feedback for us. In the operations guide, it, it does state that families should communicate with both the CBO and, and the school staff. And adjustments, you know, certainly have been made and will, will continue to be made based upon the feedback that we get from, from, obviously from stakeholders and from families. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, no, so I just, I just wanted to also just say again, I know that I did reach out in real time about one of those issues, but, but the pushback still went back to the principal where they would say no. And so although that the guide was updated and, and they might've had those directives, but providers told me and I seen specifically where principals said all enrollment went through them, and so they decided who was coming in and out of the building, because there were students who wanted to be part of the enrichment piece and not that academic piece, because they said they passed the grade and they didn't feel like they should have to be there. But principals would not allow them to enroll because it had to go through DOE. So I just, you know, it, it was a glitch in the matrix there. And also, I just wanted to go back to the cluster sites, because I know you talked about, it was looked at for like bigger schools and programs. Part of my tour and the reason for doing this is because I knew at this moment, there would be things that would be said that I would be able to verify, because I seen it with my own two eyes. There were schools that were large schools and they had big contracts and they had like 200 kids and they were in there by themselves. And there was other programs who had 100 kids and they had school buildings to themselves. And then for some reason in my district, almost all of the summerizing were co-located. And they had contracts of 150, 200. So I really want to ask, how does equity look, how does this look equitable? Because it did not seem equitable. In certain areas and certain communities, they would have one provider in the building, which led to less chaos, less confusion and less things going on. Whereas in some communities like mine, in my district specifically, often had two and three providers in the building.
Well, I think to, in, in terms of considering equity, that, that was initiated when we established like where schools were going to be located. So we definitely focused on tree neighborhoods, we also needed geographic diversity across the city. And we built, as I mentioned, on the foundation of DYCD baseline programs, which are in areas of highest need, which are rooted in the areas of highest need. So that was like where we started in terms of trying to reach students with, with, with the greatest needs. And I think the data bears out that like overwhelmingly, we reached students with high-needs poverty, again, students with disabilities, students in temporary housing. And I think the, the issue around having multiple CBOs, I think is, does require a lot of partnership work and we want to like double down on that partnership work. And I think as the further we go along in summerizing and learn, we'll take lessons from that. But I also, we also have to give a tremendous amount of respect to the, to the CBO providers themselves. And so how many kids are in a building has to do with the capacity of the building, the demand in that community. And in some cases, a provider, provider may not have had capacity to, to manage that whole building on themselves. And, and very, very often, a provider would say, look, I can double the number of kids I normally do, but I can't go further than that. But we still had families we wanted to serve, so we bring in a different program and say, look, you can both be here, we're going to be able to reach the demand in the school building and, and co-locate programs. So it's a way to, it's a way to expand the reach and it's a way for some programs who may have like the building they typically work in is going to be under construction, for example. So we locate them somewhere where there is demand and need. And I don't think it's necessarily a negative thing to have multiple programs in the building, but you raise a good point about like the challenges of partnerships and good communication around shared space and other responsibilities.
Yeah, it, I did. And I mean, some of the challenges were, especially even when it came to enrollment, it started to become the Hunger Games, right? So you had some students who were like, no, that's the program supposed to be in and they were recruiting them and they were talking to them. I was like, what is happening? Like what, everyone calm down, like everyone relax. So I think that, like you said, it does take a lot of coordination, which is why I, once again, I'll say it again, we have to start early, because that takes coordination and people to talk and, and understand what that looks like. And the, I'm happy you brought up construction, because that's my next question. Providers reportedly reported construction in buildings and hosting summerizing sites and impact on programmatic deliveries such as restricting access to gyms and cafeteria. How is school construction in effect, having effect on program and being taken into account?
I don't know if DOE wants to jump in in that. I'll just say like our goal was not to cite programs where construction would inhibit the, the ability of the program to work. And in those cases, we had relocations. I didn't receive feedback about construction being a barrier to programs that did operate. We didn't hear that feedback, I'm not aware of that.
Yeah, what I could add, Chair, is that, you know, DOE did work and coordinate with SCA in terms of which sites, you know, we're going through some major capital work. I know that there was some, some major work happening on Staten Island, which went to some schools, you know, some, some, some issues there. But, and also, this is an opportunity to thank the council because of your extraordinary ResOAI support, capital priorities in terms of major upgrades to schools. That also contributes to some of the issues in terms of work happening over the summer. So your major budget victories in terms of school improvements also factor into what schools are capable of being used in summer as well. So I want to thank, thank the chairs on that and all the councilmembers.
Yeah, no, and I mean, obviously, we, we know construction is needed in a lot of our schools and upgrades in summer is the time that that happens. But, you know, just thinking about how do we think about that moving forward? Because there was a couple of sites that I did visit where the schoolyard was under construction or the gym was under construction or they could only use half of the cafeteria and it just caused a lot of confusion. So I just, you know, hopefully, we can start thinking about that and identifying that early. And then helping providers and schools find other alternatives to that, I think would also be helpful. I mean, I think I have a bill that would address that, but that's here and there. Summerizing providers reported that DYCD did not accommodate meaningful weight in providers' feedback in planning the program. What, that whenever focus groups are held, constituents are only a performative gesture. Would you please explain why this is the case and what is the plan to address this?
I think if I, I think you're, you're saying there was inadequate opportunity for input in advance of the program from CBOs?
Yeah, so, yeah, so the feedback that we're getting that a lot of the providers feel like the communication is performative and that you're not really taking it in consideration because they don't see it being trickled down.
Well, I think, you know, I'd like to hear, I'd like to, I'd like to invite any providers giving you that feedback to reach out to me directly. We definitely are taking very seriously input and we got a lot of feedback. We got it from evaluation processes last year. We had, we got it from, you know, umbrella groups like United Neighborhood Houses. And we continued the CBO inter-agency work group through the summer that began like prior to spring 2021, through the year, so that we were meeting with some of our core summerizing providers all through the year leading up to the spring. And that continued, that was on top of the CBO convenings and other groups. So I-
So I, I think there's evidence that we really did hear provider input and that we made significant changes. I outlined some of that in my testimony. But I acknowledge we need to continue to hear from CBOs and I welcome ideas, you know, we also try to balance like not overwhelming them with our convenings and feedback sessions and evaluation surveys. But there's no limit to our desire to take in additional feedback from community-based organizations and we welcome, we welcome that.
No, absolutely. And I think we, and we've spoken about this Deputy Commissioner, where I think sometimes providers, we have to acknowledge that you're not only, you know, helping them with the service, but you're also their funder. So it's really hard for a provider to come to their funder and say, hey, I'm struggling or ask questions because that can put them in jeopardy. So I think if we have to get to a place where we acknowledge that and understanding why I get feedback that you might not get because you're their funder in addition to helping them with the services. And so, you know, sometimes that puts us in a conundrum. So I just think we have to think about, well, how do we really get real feedback and people not feel threatened? And not saying that folks are threatened and I want to make that clear, I'm just saying it becomes really awkward.
Understood. We will keep thinking about processes where we can account for that. And then we know we have a whole lot of providers who are not afraid at all to share their feedback and we can rely on them to be the sounding board in addition to trying to solicit additional input.
How many ELL students were served in summerizing this year?
Thank you Chair, I actually had, make sure I flagged that question. The number was 18,000.
Thank you. Providers and advocates report staff shortages. They pointed into a number of contributing factors such as inadequate wages and benefits and a flight of youth workers to better paying DOE positions in other industries, although vaccine mandates and childcare issues and background track backlogs among others. What is being done to assist the providers with recruitment and retaining youth workers?
That is a great question. This challenge is across the board in the human services sector, not just in New York City, but across the country and in other sectors as well. It was a real challenge that we heard over and over again from the beginnings of our planning stages. It accounted, I think, for some of the, some of the times when providers would say, look, I can stretch this far, but I can't stretch any further. And some of the things that we did to support were, were planned job fairs. We had a technical assistants come and offer tips for recruitment strategies. We streamlined the regulatory framework for summerizing so that we reduced the background clearance burden, which is something that is sometimes a deterrent for a staff person who's in that process but then, you know, finds a job in retail, you know, before that they, they're fully processed. And then finally, we're grateful to the support from Department of Education who provided in some of the real extreme circumstances DOE substitutes to supplement the CBO provider staff. So I'm, we definitely heard much feedback from providers about that challenge and we did our best to try to mitigate that and we're open to more ideas and opportunities to give them support going forward.
Yeah, and I think it is just acknowledging like human services, we've been experiencing this across the board. So I think it is one of the things that we do need to kind of like think about and how do we have like, what is our long-term plan? Because that has been very challenging across the board. Providers also had concerns about staffing issues and difficulties to meet the participant to staff ratio and therefore negatively impact enrollment. Their contracts may be affected, this seems rather unfair. What if any is being done to address this concern?
I think that's the same question really about like how to meet staffing challenges. I will say that working under DOE authorization, that regulatory change that we talked about did offer some flexibility for CBO providers around, around staff ratios.
And Chair, that's one of the items that came up relatively early is feedback from providers, how we implement the programming for summerizing, whether or not they're running, and you're familiar with this, under their SAC licenses or camp permits. But we were able to do it as a DOE authorized program, which actually opened the door for them to onboard staff a lot faster and quicker.
Thank you. These are some more general questions and these are some questions from our providers that they provided for me to ask you guys. And some of them already have been asked, but I want to make sure that I am honoring them in this space because this is about them. So what percentage increase youth providers' contracts reimbursements rate do you believe is necessary when we're thinking about like the summer camp? But I think you guys already asked this question, so I'm going to actually skip that one, so I apologize. What, what weight should be accorded to stakeholders and advocates' input on the youth services RFP process?
Can you repeat the first part of that question?
What weight should be accommodated to stakeholders and advocates' input for the youth services RFP process?
Is it rate?
Weight.
Wait, oh. A tremendous amount of weight. We, we, we plan, our goal is to launch a concept paper for Compass after school programs before the end of this year.
This year?
And we look forward to feedback.
Oh wait, I just want to make sure we're saying 2022, we are going to have a concept paper for Compass?
Our goal is to release a concept paper before the end of this calendar year and...
2022?
In preparation for that concept paper, we have...
Don't make me do a happy dance. And y'all also trying to ruin my whole holiday because we got two concept papers out, so that's going to be my holiday reading? Come on.
This is our goal.
Ruin my holidays, got it.
We look forward to continued feedback from, from our providers to inform the RFP.
All right, so we got that on record, they said 2022. Folks know that, that is very exciting to hear because we've been like asking for this, but I'm, y'all really ruined my, because I mean, two concept papers, y'all coming out back to back, all of them? All right, all right. How do you, how can D Y C D better support youth providers?
That is, that is a question, that is a great question to frame every day that I get up in the morning and come to work. How can we better support CBO providers? I think it's, it's like as I've mentioned at some point, like communication, coordination, stakeholder engagement. You mentioned like we are the funder, so funds are an important part of that and how we structure contracts. So I think we need to be conscious of what, we need to be in communication with providers constantly about what they need from us. Because, you know, we, we have contracts and we have requirements of them and I just think it's a two-way communication.
And just, just adding, how do we use our partnership as D Y C D with the providers that we fund to mobilize them in neighborhoods, to come together, to meet the efforts that they're all trying to serve, but do it in partnership? And how do we break the barriers of competition for funding versus, look, we have funding and we're here in this neighborhood and we're trying to meet the needs of young people, adults and families? And how does D Y C D help create that platform for them to work together?
Yeah, I think that that's really important just around because a lot of providers and folks in the community operate off a scarcity model where it's like there is not enough to go around. And I don't believe that. I think that there's always enough to go around and there's always need and there's always something that we're going to need to support. And so, but that's how it's been set up for folks to compete against each other instead of saying, how are we working together for the collective goal and the collective impact? And so I think it's going to take work, not only from D Y C D, but the elected officials and community leaders to understanding that we need to be looking at goals and how are we working towards the ultimate goal, which is support our young people, create space for them and be loved and appreciated and accepted. So I agree. So it's going to be some undoing that we have to do because it's been drilled into them so long that it's a competition. And then I have, we're wrapping up, we're coming to an end with these questions. Y'all did a good job today. Shout out to y'all. What is the long-term plan for funding for summerizing? It is currently funded through stimulus funding, which is drying up in 2025.
Well, to start, I'm very pleased that the summerizing budget like for D Y C D contracted services is baselined. So that's very exciting. It puts us in a good position for planning for 2023.
Yeah, I think I said until 2025, but I guess, I guess that's the ways away? So you don't, you want to talk about it in 2024?
Our funding is baseline.
Okay.
Yeah, our funding is baseline.
Well, thank, thank you to the administration for being here with us today, like I just stated. Thank you for answering the questions and as always, I'm going to continue to push and ask questions and be that person because everyone knows how much I love our young people.
Thank you everyone, we're going to transition to public testimony shortly. Thank you everybody for your patience. We're going to transition to public testimony at this time. I'd now like to call on our first in-person panel, Eddie Silverio, John Williams, and Dante Bravo. You may begin your testimony when the sergeant starts your clock.
Good afternoon. Thank you to Chair Stevens and the committee for giving me an opportunity to testify in support of expanded summer youth and year-round employment for young New Yorkers. My name is John Williams. I'm the co-founder and CEO of Real Works. We're a Brooklyn-based youth arts and career development nonprofit that has mentored and trained thousands of young filmmakers citywide through in-school, after-school, and workforce programs for over 20 years. Today, my testimony is about bringing our successful career exploration program, Media Makers, to additional youth through summer and year-round SYEP. I want to start by thanking Chair Stevens for your support of our CASA grant, enabling us to bring our filmmaking programs to JHS 22 in your district. Our CASA partnerships are the first step in a continuum of opportunities that Real Works provides young New Yorkers to discover filmmaking, tell their stories, and explore careers in film and television. A key component of that is internships, meaning paid internships starting in high school. Through Media Makers, which is a partnership between Real Works, the Mayor's Office of Media Entertainment, CUNY, and leading media companies, high school and CUNY students explore careers through multiple paid internships over two to three years combined with workforce readiness training, one-on-one coaching, and industry-backed credentials. We partner with over 80 employers, including major studios like Paramount, Warner Brothers Discovery, NBC Universal, Netflix, and Amazon. What began as a work readiness program has become a jobs program with over 87% of our graduates securing employment once they enter the workforce within 12 months of graduation. So Media Makers works, our participants graduate with resumes of success, knowledge of industry, professional networks, and wraparound supports they seek employment. We strongly support, we, year-round youth employment as well as summer youth employment, and we're seeking to become a provider with SYEP when the opportunity arises. Until then, we're seeking opportunities to connect with providers with whom we might subcontract to bring our services to New Yorkers.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony. And yeah, I'm excited about you guys being at CASA, JH 22, one of my many schools, and look forward to like expanding the work that you're doing in the Bronx as well.
Thank you so much.
Dante Bravo, are you testifying on behalf of?
I'm testifying on behalf of United Neighborhood Houses.
Got it. You may begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
Thank you so much. Thank you Chair Stevens for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Dante Bravo and I'm the Youth Policy Analyst over at United Neighborhood Houses. UNH is a policy organization that represents 46 settlement houses that reach New Yorkers from all walks of life. Based on feedback from the larger CBO community, UNH urges the city to consider the following for a successful summer 2023. Begin a cornerstone program in deserve cost per participant rates on par with their school-based alternatives, if not higher rates, given that these programs are responsible for facilities maintenance, more hours of operation, and many more concerns not present in a school-based program. The city must register all immediate payment of any outstanding contracts for work done in summer 2021 and summer 2022. And finally, in the conversation of K through eight summer programming, UNH does not support continuing the summer rising model as the only form of programming widely available to children and their families. Summer rising's model at best sidelines youth development in favor of seeing young people as deficient because of their academic achievement and at worst signals a gentrification of youth work from youth work professionals, with largely women of color from their local communities being devalued from their expertise in a field that they've led in for decades. In favor of largely white DOE-led programming that has far more resources attached to it. To reduce our young people to academic deficits and then design programming exclusively on that basis ignores the urgency to recognize their creativity, resilience, and strength throughout a collective traumatic event. The city has yet to provide meaningful research to compel New York City's families to continue in this model despite the fact that traditional summer camp has positive academic benefits while also teaches core skills that are difficult to attain in a classroom setting. The city must restore power to CBOs to do the following: manage their own budgets without having to go through inefficient processes to justify their spending; maintain their own roster so that if there are young people who cannot attend a CBO's programming, CBOs have the power to unenroll that youth so that the slot does not go to waste; maintain SAC licensing ratios of staff to youth to allow budgets and allow for budgets that account for the additional staff and OTPS costs; access more resources to support D-75 district youth. Non-academic experiences are what our young people's wealthier, wider counterparts use to build skills in the summer and it is fundamentally unfair that students whose families cannot afford expensive private camp experiences must therefore experience summer school in order to access something similar. Working families of all backgrounds deserve better options for their families than a program that essentially amounts to summer school with minimal amounts of recreation. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. You can reach me at dbravo@unh.org.
Wow, I do know where to reach you and this is the first time I'm meeting you in person. I've been talking to you for the last two years. This is crazy, so very nice to meet you in person.
Lovely to meet you too, council member.
All right, nice. You have legs, I see them. Look at that, I have legs too.
All right, sorry. Thank you very, thank you very much to this panel. We're going to transition to a virtual panel next.
Thank you so much.
This will be our last panelist. I'd like to call on Randy Levine to testify. You may begin when the sergeant starts your clock.
Time starts now.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I'm unable to start my video, it says the host has stopped it, but I will, I can testify like this.
I'm sorry, you can continue.
Okay, okay, I'm still getting the error message on video, but I'm not allowed to turn it on, so I will testify. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about summer rising and SYEP. My name is Randy Levine and I'm the Policy Director at Advocates for Children of New York. Given our limited time, we will give just a few examples today of the barriers we have seen in the past and recommendations for change to help ensure that all students have access... to help ensure that all students have access and the opportunity for full and meaningful participation in the city's summer programming. We heard from families whose students with disabilities did not have the accommodations and supports they needed to participate in summer rising programs in place for the start of the summer, despite the city's legal obligation. Given how short the summer program is, the city should roll out a process for requesting and approving accommodations with enough time to ensure that the individualized support each student needs is in place for the first day of summer. We heard from families whose children were unable to participate in afternoon enrichment activities because the D O E provided bus service only at three P M and not at the end of the day at six P M. While the D O E offered a prepaid ride-share service for families to use at six P M, it was rolled out just before the start of the summer without time for families to make informed decisions about their children's summer participation and required a parent to accompany the student in the car. This summer, the city should ensure that all students who need bus service to get to school, including students with disabilities, students living in shelter, and students in foster care who have a right to transportation, have bus service or a comparable door-to-door alternative to get to and from the full day of summer programming that does not rely on parents having to transport their children when it's the city's obligation to do so. We also heard about the difficulty of finding available summer rising seats for children living in shelters, given how quickly seats filled. The city should launch a strengths-based outreach plan to ensure families of historically marginalized groups of students know about summer programs and have needed support in enrolling, including targeted outreach and support to families living in shelters and immigrant families. And should ensure there are seats available for students whose shelter or foster care placement changes after the enrollment period. This past summer, the S Y E P application and instructions were available online only in English, posing a barrier to the thousands of young people whose primary language is a language other than English. The city should ensure that S Y E P information and applications are available in at least the nine most common languages that the application asks if youth need language support at their placements and that the city allocates funding to make sure youth receive the language support they need to participate regardless of their home language. And the city should also ensure that students who are undocumented have the opportunity to participate. Our written testimony has a couple of additional recommendations. We look forward to working with you to ensure that all youth have the opportunity to participate in summer programming. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Randy. That concludes this panel. I'd like to do a last call, just for any folks online or for any folks in person, to make sure that anyone who was registered to testify has had the opportunity to do so. Looks like we're all set. I'd now like to turn it over to Councilmember Stevens for her closing remarks.
Well, today's hearing was really about making sure that we are having the discussion and planning process start a lot earlier than any other year before because, as we know, in summer, there's so many moving parts that there's needs for a lot of collaboration, communication. And that often does not happen because we're rushing to put programs together. So I'm excited that we absolutely had an amazing summer where young people learned, thrived, and got new experiences. But my goal is always for us to be better and do better. So thank you all for who joined us today. Appreciate D Y C D who came out, all the advocates, and all those who testified. And with that, I conclude this hearing.